Good evening, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 5:45. And at this time we're going to go into executive session. The City Council for the City of McLennan-Chisholm, Texas reserves the right to convene into executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed as authorized by Texas Government Code Chapter 551, including but not limited to 551.961. Consultation with Attorney, 551.072. Real Property, 551.073. Prospective Gifts, 551.074. Personal Matters, 076. Security Devices, 086. Utility Competitive Matters, 087. Economic Development Negotiation. The City Council of McLennan-Chisholm will recess into executive session to consult what the attorney has authorized by 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. So for 2.1, the City of McLennan-Chisholm City Council will recess into executive session as authorized by 551.074 A1 of the Texas Government Code to discuss personal matters to deliberate the unemployment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee to it interim city secretary. So with that we'll go into executive session at 5:46.
...
We are out of the executive session and we are going to go into recess until six thirty P M. At that time we will be on public, six thirty P M.
Thank you.
All right, folks, we're going to come out of recess at 6:30 and convene our meeting. So at this time, we're going to do our invocation, and I would ask that Mayor Pro Tim Dan Tucker lead us in our invocation, please.
If we can bow our heads, thank you, Lord, for giving us, again, this opportunity to come together and discuss the business that confronts the city. We seek your guidance, your blessings, always wanting to follow your will, and we pray this in Christ's name, amen.
And we'll do our pledges. We didn't have anyone show up today, so we will ask Councilmember Brewer to lead us in our pledges. So at this time, with the pledges finishing and July 4th upon us, I reached out to Gina Manus, and we have a special guest with us tonight. Mr. Richie Anderson is going to honor America as July 4th comes up in the singing of our national anthem, so I'm going to ask Richie Anderson to come up and do that for us.
Oh, say, can you see But the thunder be died Was so proudly we hailed At the twilight last sleeping Through the skies and by stars Filled the air all as bright Oh, the rain must be washed Was so gallantly streaming And the rocket swept there The stars were seen in there Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, now the stars say go Better than may Oh, the land of the free And the home of the way.
up. Thank y'all for indulging me in that. So, next are rules of decorum. I feel we all know how to act, and I think we'll all treat each other with respect, so it's really all there is to say about that. So with that, we'll go into citizens' comments, and we only have one, and that will be Gina Manus.
Gina Manus, Cheney Place. I was a little bit late to the last meeting, but I was so anxious to say something, and I didn't want to be out of order, but I just wanted to express, I think on behalf of all Chisholm Crossing, but all of McLendon-Chisholm, our sincere appreciation for the countless hours that each one of you has spent led by Mayor McNeil. And the, first of all, the storm, and the electricity, and the trees, and the debris, and everything that went into that, and you're still organizing all the cleanup. I mean, man, you hit the ground running, Mayor, and all of you city council members. I mean, you had, you have gone to meetings, the soil and conservation meetings, and you've met with all the specialists, and things that people have no idea, that we have no idea, that you do, that make our city just work like a machine. We just want to say our sincere appreciation. Then, you can't rest too long before you got another little issue to deal with called the dam in Chisholm Crossing. So, how you've taken that bull by the horn and not just accepted the first report because it was an easy thing to do, you had no vested interest as the city council, but you cared about people. I mean, wow, that's fresh, and we just really want to thank you. Each one of you are experts in your own field, and you've brought it all together, and it's just exciting as a citizen to see you working together for those you serve, not for any other cause, but for that which you sit in that seat, and we are just so deeply appreciative, and words just simply can't convey that. And I know you're still waiting on reports and whatnot, but just as a resident in that particular community, and you're all fretting like, do we pack our bags? Do we go? Your communication is excellent, you were always on point, and it was a wonder of wonder. After that second wave of storms came through, our electricity did not go off. It might have flickered, but we were just holding our breaths, you know, like, oh, no, and it didn't go off because you got to the root of the problem. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you, Chief, to everything you did. You were right by their sides. We just thank each one of you. So, please, you know, you get all the problems sometimes blasted from here, but just please accept that. I know there's many, many people who will echo that same message, all right? Thanks.
So, since there are no more citizens' comments, we will close citizens' comments at 6:38, which will take us into consent. Oh, I apologize. We're going to look at item number five, and is there any action as a result of executive session?
I'll make a motion as a result of executive session that we accept as interim secretary, Angela Jennings.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
With a second, do we have any further discussion at this time? With no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 And show that unanimous. Welcome to the club, Angela. So, that's going to now take us to our consent agenda, excuse me. Is there any items that need to be pulled from consent agenda to discuss? If not, I will make, I'll accept a motion to accept consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes, or I'm sorry, the consent agenda as provided by the under-sections 9.1 and 9.2.
With the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 And show that unanimous as well. We'll move to items for consideration and action. 10.1, discuss and consider approval of resolution of the City Council of the City of McLendon-Chisholm, Texas approving the land use assumptions and capital improvements plan related to the roadway impact fee study and providing an effective date. Conrad?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As you, as you're aware, the city has started back in February walking through this roadway impact fee process. Each of you at the beginning of it got a calendar of all the different activities that were specific to Texas state law. We followed all those things. One of the things that we were required to do after the land use and capital improvement was, was to, by resolution, to, to have you approve that after the public hearing. The public hearing was held, and so that's what this item is. Also, we have our, a, our representative from Kimley Horn here, but I'll turn it over to our city planner, Asa, for a staff report on that.
Can, can y'all hear me?
I think you might want to use the podium just because it'll actually record off of the feed, right? Okay. Thanks, Asa.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So I just wanted to give a brief overview of kind of item 10.1, still like Conrad said, this is an item that we've been working on since February, and so I just kind of want to talk about where we are in the process. We are nearing the end, so kind of where we are, and then what we've done. So, we're nearing the end of the process, so we've had three CIAC meetings where CIAC members have given Kimley Horn feedback, they have adjusted the presentation you're about to see today, and they have also adjusted the report as well. We are due, it changed the trip miles, and I know that some of y'all had questions about how the vehicle miles are kind of tabulated, and so that is something that Pekin walked through, so we changed that, and then we changed the additional housing units, just kind of based on the growth in the city that we're seeing over the next 10 years. And then we had those questions asked and answered. This right here is our second public hearing. The first one was May 14th, and so that's kind of where we are and where we are today. So today, item 10.1 would be the passage of the resolution accepting the land use assumptions and the capital improvements plan, and then we'll have a public hearing on the maximum impact fees, and then approval of the maximum impact fees. The only thing that will be left for the next council meeting on July 9th would be the actual adoption and approval of the maximum impact fee ordinance, adopting the numbers, the actual impact fee, and so that'll come July 9th at the next council meeting. And that concludes my staff report, and I will turn it over to Pete, who is here to give the roadway impact fees presentation.
Thank you, Asa, and it's amazing, so far, no feedback. Hopefully I didn't jinx that since Conrad's mic's still on.
Try not to be too loud, keep that going. Evening, Mayor and council, I'm Pete Kelly with Kimley Horn, and I'm a transportation engineer and been running with the roadway impact fee study with staff since last year, of course, with this group, with council, and with CIAC since early this spring. The slide's over here, you can go to the next slide. Oh, you can go to the next one if it'll, if it'll move forward. Just one thing to kind of start covering with you quickly while we're working on the slides. As Asa mentioned, we met with the CIAC, which stands for Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. That is a committee that's required to That is a committee that's required to provide guidance to council by state law by chapter 395, which governs impact fees in the state of Texas. So we had those meetings, received that feedback. We'll show you the slide here in just a minute, but essentially, some of the feedback that we got from CIAC early on, when we presented in April, was that they reviewed our presentation, they reviewed our, our study, and recommended that we increase our production of residential units for the next 10 years. And also that we increased our trip length, as Asa mentioned, to six miles maximum, because that really goes into our calculation of vehicle mile demand over the next 10 years, which also goes into the dollar per vehicle mile calculation, which we'll show you once we get a chance to go through the slides here. Right on time. Alright, so essentially this slide is what I was just going over, which were the updates that we made. This is actually the larger updates. There were some smaller ones that we also made throughout the report, which we can address in further detail if you have any questions about those. But we essentially addressed all the comments that we received from CIAC. Go to the next slide. And this is the Land Use Assumptions Table. Just as a recap, we break out the land use categories into four main categories, which we know your future land use plan has more categories than that, but we do this for the purposes of impact fee demand calculation. So we have essentially residential unemployment projections. Our residential is in the number of housing units. So, single-family housing units, just over 3,000 over the next 10 years is our projection. And in terms of employment, basic would be industrial uses mostly. Service would be institutional and office-based uses, and retail would essentially be everything else, shopping, dining, entertainment. As you can see, we have a very small amount of employment uses projected in comparison to residential. But you do have some commercial in your land use plan. Go to the next slide. So, Land Use Assumptions are two of the primary technical components, which are part of the first resolution that Asa introduced tonight. The second is the Capital Improvements Plan itself. This is the plan for roadway projects which are eligible to be paid with impact fees to be collected once the ordinance is adopted. So this lists out new and widening roadway projects, which can be funded partially or fully through roadway impact fees. And as a reminder again, due to state law, only roads on an adopted plan within the city limits can be included on this plan, so no roads outside the city limits or that are not on the mobility plan can be included. Next slide. Oh, do we, can we go back one? Okay, no, we can go forward, thank you. After we did the land use assumptions and the Capital Improvements Plan, we had the ingredients that we needed to calculate the maximum fee for the city of McLennan-Chisholm. Essentially, we take those growth units that we calculated in vehicle miles, and we divide that by the, the cost of the roadway projects on that CIP map that you saw on the previous slides. So it's the cost divided by those units of growth. And then the second, the last part of that is there's a credit calculation that's required to take place by state law. And you can't, you have to essentially take the number you calculated and cut it in half. And so this table kind of walks through those steps that I just explained. But we, we added up the cost of all those orange and red roads on that map that you saw a few slides ago. Cost of that capacity was about $281 million. And the vehicle mile growth over the next 10 years was 14,709 vehicle miles. So we used that number to essentially say that we're not planning, you're not planning to build all $281 million over the next 10 years. The growth essentially justifies 22% of that. Doesn't necessarily mean you're committed to building that either, but that's just the estimate of how much of that infrastructure you may need in the next 10 years. So, applying that 22.1%, the cost of capacity attributable to growth in the next 10 years is $53.7 million. And then, like I said, the, the state law required step is cutting that in half down to $26.8 million. And so we divide that by the 14,000 vehicle miles in growth, and that gets us to a maximum accessible fee of $1,827 per vehicle mile. And so from there, that $1,827, it's going to look different for different land uses, whether it's a commercial business or whether it's a single-family home. We know right now and for the immediate future, the most common use is going to be single-family homes in McLennan-Chisholm. So our example that we're showing here, after you do an extra step of calculation, is a single-family home would be, the maximum fee would be $8,422. And so that, that sets, if approved, that essentially sets the maximum that can be collected per new home that's built. Again, this doesn't apply to existing home or existing residence. This is new, a fee for new development that's charged one time. That was one of the, this was one of the requests that we got from CIAC, was to show some comparison data of neighboring cities that also charge roadway impact fees and what their maximum fees are versus what they're charging. And so this is already converted from the vehicle mile rate into the single-family home rate. So as you can see on this table here, we go, we range from $1,400 a single-family home roughly in Fornie all the way up to $9,700 in Roy City, and at $7,100 per single-family home in Fayette. And so having McLennan-Chisholm right there at $8,422 for the maximum fee. So we have TBD for the collection rate. That is of course a decision that council can make in terms of how much of that $8,422 to collect. And again, as you can see, some of the neighboring cities we've shown on here are charging the full 100%. Some are charging a little bit less, 70%, 75%. Roy City kind of varies. The percentage varies depending on where you are. And this is just again the same data shown in a chart format to see the comparison with, with neighboring cities. Again, some of these cities may be growing at a different rate or have different infrastructure needs than McLennan-Chisholm does. But this is, gives you a good idea for what the market might look like for a development looking to come into the city. And so there, there are several options. Of course, you have the option of adopting any fee up to the maximum fee, but we want to provide several options for you to consider that we talked about with staff. Option one, we're calling the competitive rate, which is 35, about 35% of the maximum fee. In other words, $3,000 a single-family home. Option two is 50%. In other words, the idea that there's a bit of an equal partnership between the city and development. 41, 42, 11 per home. The recommendation, which you may have read in your packet from CIAC, is to charge $7,500 a single, per single-family home. And then the, the option number four is 100% of the maximum fee, which is the, we're calling the growth base for growth option, that, that full burden be placed off on new development. So just to kind of walk through some of the actions that we're asking of you tonight. So, the first item would be to consider approval of that resolution in front of you for the land use assumptions in CIP. State law requires that that's a separate item, aside from the maximum fee calculation itself. Those need to be two separate items. So that would be the second request, is that you consider approval of the maximum fee, essentially approving the study itself. And as Asa mentioned, in the July 9th meeting would be the ordinance when you would actually decide, what are you going to collect and when are you going to start collecting that and making that effective? So approving the study tonight doesn't begin the collection of fees. It just authorizes that, that is the foundation for which the ordinance can build upon. With that, if you have any questions, I can answer any questions before we move on to considering actions.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions on this. Your vehicle mileage, the initial six miles per trip max? How was that arrived at generally?
That's a good question. Going back to state law, it requires cities to use service areas. So larger cities will have to subdivide their city into multiple service areas. And the, the size requirement for that is six miles. So a service area may be no longer than six miles. And we looked at the city limits of McLennan-Chisholm as roughly six miles throughout. So we can't account for trip lengths after they leave McLennan-Chisholm. We can only account for the, the distance traveled within the city.
And how does that six miles relate to footnote two on page seven, where there's a 4.61 vehicle mile per home value?
That is a good question. So, we calculate vehicle miles for different land uses based off of two factors. The first factor is trip rate, or how many, basically how many cars leave that place or come to that place during the PMP hour. So, for a single-family home, it's about one car per house effectively in the PMP hour. And then we multiply that by the trip length. So we start with, we look at a data set that was collected from Dallas-Fort Worth National Household Travel Survey. We looked at those trip distances, and for a single-family home, it's just under 10 miles. And so, we next do a reduction, an origin destination reduction, because we know that there's always two land uses involved in every trip. So we say if you're leaving your house and you're going to work, a half of that trip we attribute to the house, half of that we attribute to work. So we essentially cut that, that length in half and then multiply those two together to get the vehicle mile number. And that would be in, if you have a copy of the report, that, that would be explained in the Love-Met table, L-U-V-M-E-T table, and then prior sections kind of explain how those are calculated as well.
And those were average values or something for those two variables you were looking at for the trip lengths?
The trip rates we get from the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Handbook, which is a national source, that is very commonly used for traffic estimation, trip generation. And then those are, that's based off of studies that have been done.
Councilmember McLennan, do you have any questions on that? No sir. Councilmember Brewer? Councilmember Day?
Yeah, just a quick, a quick question about the, the change that was made from four to six on the assumptions here. I just wanted to find out if going from four to six has a proportional response in the recommended price on the outside. So in other words, from going from four to six, does that increase 50% in terms of the dollar value? Or is it, there's some other alchemy happening here that makes that not occur?
It, it doesn't make it a one-to-one change. In other words, that 20% increase in trip length doesn't, didn't result in a 20% increase in the dollar amount. And then there's a lot of, the table you saw before with the five or six rows, there's actually a, a larger table in a study with almost 20 rows that goes through different calculations. And so, it, it helps and hurts at, at the same time with that, with the additional trip length. And so it ended up with a dollar per vehicle mile that was pretty close to what we had before. But for each individual use, when those, when those uses end up getting charged, they can get charged more because now they're, they're showing a higher demand per use.
And then with respect to the credit for ad valorem taxes you have here on, this is on the page seven. Can we go back to page seven? I just want to know what the credit, or what is the, where's this number coming from?
So the bottom bullet, oh, I'm sorry, on slide seven? The credit for ad valorem taxes. That was the required step from state law that says, we know that when these developments come in, they're going to start, either the residents or businesses will start paying ad valorem taxes, and some of those will go to road improvements. And so the idea is so that we're not double-dipping, we have to account for that in some way. And one option is to do a detailed financial analysis to estimate what that would be. The other option is to do this 50% credit, which is as we visited with staff at the onset of the project, we decided we were going to pursue the 50% credit.
Oh, I see. So, so you had a choice between the two pathways and instead of making these assumptions, you just went with this simpler calculation?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Mayor Protim, do you have anything, sir?
You know, I'm, I'm looking at this and I actually attended both the meetings, several of the meetings with P&amp;Z, and when this is discussed after the P&amp;Z meeting. And so, I'm entertained by, a little bit by the subjectivity of the formulation. I'm a hard science guy, and so if you're looking at board theory or anything else along those lines in physics, it's a little bit more predictable. It's hard formulations. This is just a little bit, but that's me, you know? So, I accept this, and it seems to be standard acceptance in the industry, so I'm good with it. But the way that you can move the numbers, I remember the commentary going from four to six, and it was a valid argument when they made that. But that changed significantly, the outcomes in terms of the money's generated. So, just a comment more than anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I have on this is, I did see it until the one slide, number 10. So we had the options and the CIAC basically recommended 89% or 7,500 as the recommendation. Now, council gets to decide which way they want to go on it, but the recommended from the CIAC is what, is option number three correct on that?
That, yes, that's correct.
That's all I have. So with that, if there's no other discussion, I'll look for a motion to approve item 10.1.
I would like, I would like to move that we approve the resolution of the City Council of the City of McLennan-Chisholm, Texas, approving the land use assumptions and capital improvements plan related to the roadway impact fee study and providing an effective date.
Do I have a second?
Second.
With the second, is there any further discussion from council?
I do have a question on, on this. This is one for Mr. Howell. If we were to adopt the option number four, for example, at the higher end of this, is there any way that these developers or someone who is going to be assessed this charge can challenge any of this?
No. I can elaborate if you'd like, but it's pretty simple. We're following the procedures laid out in 395. We've had the public hearings, we've had the assumptions, we've had the report. Proceedually, that would be really the only way someone could challenge this. We clearly have the authority given to us by the statute, the whole chapter 395, really the only way. And at that point, I'm not so sure, there's still, you could probably appreciate this. I'm not so sure there would be an argument, we could maybe evade the proceedings until we get the procedural aspect correctly, because we certainly have the authority to do it. So, in my opinion, I don't think there's any basis for a developer coming in, they may end up going, oh, you should have done two, you should have done two. That's the best thing for the, well, that's a legislative finding and a judge is not going to have any authority to do anything with that anyway, so.
And so they can't challenge the assumptions that were the underlying base of this, that we didn't take something into account or any of those sorts of things. That's all I'm wondering.
Again, if you're, what you're talking about is the underlying data. I mean, they can try to challenge that all they want, but I mean, it's got to have a rational basis. Do we have a rational basis for doing what we did and was reasonable? And the standard is going to be yes on all these. It's not, you know, they're, they're not going to be able to claim some protected class or some special rights or some other fundamental right or something like that. I mean, it's going to be, hey, did y'all follow the procedure? And they're, the courts are just not going to get into it, and it's a good question because it's going to be subject to much, you know, debate, much ado about nothing, I think somebody said one time. Is, you get into the facts of it, it's like, well, that's not what we're really here to do as the court, as the judge. Did, did you have facts? Is that what you looked at? Did you follow the procedure? And the conclusion you came to is, you know, because it's tantamount to saying, oh, I don't really like the reasons that you had for passing whatever law that is in the first place. And that's, yeah. I tried to stick with no, but then y'all were looking at me like, you know, hey.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Show that unanimous. We'll move on to 10.2, Public Hearing Roadway Impact Fee Maximum Fee and Roadway Impact Fee Study. Conrad, back to you again, sir. This echoes 10.1, I believe.
Yes, sir. For this one, it's a requirement of state law to hold your second public hearing. But this one is, is on the roadway impact fee maximum fee. So just have to open and hear any public comment about it.
Is there any public comments? Okay, with no public comments, we will close that public comments and hearing. So we'll move on to item 10.3, Discuss and Consider Approving the Adoption of the McLennan Chism Roadway Impact Fee Maximum Fees. Back to you, Conrad.
Okay, and I will turn it over to our city planner, but this is basically what you just did on the on the Lua and the CIP, but this time it's on the maximum fees. So this is something the state law really wants, the opportunity of its residents within the state to have the opportunity to comment if they have questions. So two public hearings, I mean, and then the discussion on all of them, the posting, in the newspapers and the timeframes. All these things that you have in your calendar are ways that the state says, if you're going to institute these impact fees, you got to let your residents know all about it and give them the opportunity to comment. Turn it over to Asa.
Thank you, Conrad, mayor, members of the council. The slideshow is still up and I do have the staff report, but I just want to hit a few key quick points. And I don't want to just read through the whole staff report. So Kim Lee Horn provided us with options one, two, and three. So the 35% option is option one. So that's less than fate and Roy City, but comparable to Princeton and Heat. Option two was the 50% or the 40 to 11. And so that's the city partnering with developers to pay for half of the recoverable cost. Still less than fate and comparable to Roy City. And then option three is the 100% 8422 growth pays for growth. So the development pays for the full impact of the growth. This was a very good discussion that was had at the CIAC meeting before they decided to make the recommendation. We do have the CIAC chairman here, Mr. Mark Kipit. And so I will turn it over to him for any comments that he'd like to make about any of the discussions or kind of how the CIAC got to there, went through the process and kind of made their recommendation.
Chairman, I think you just got put on the spot there. Do y'all have any questions for the chair on the CIAC, Mark Kipit?
Questions, but I did watch both of the meetings that they had. And, you know, the conclusion that they came with, I'll most likely support. I think that, and you explained earlier, the degree of discussion that went along with that. And one of the things I've been trying to emphasize is, is the amount of work that's done down with CIAC in this case, but also with P and Z, and reiterating the fact that you guys are kind of a clearinghouse for us. And the thorough discussions, I think we have to learn to appreciate and follow your lead on some things. Obviously, we're going to question some things, but beyond that, accept and appreciate the amount of effort, discussion, inputs, all of the above, into the conclusions that you come up with. So again, I'll probably support the $7,500 marking.
Yeah, I would like to also thank Chairman Mark Kipit and his commissioners. Not only did they have to do P and Z, but he was voluntold to take on the CIAC. And if you can, in your next meeting, I know you have one of your commissioners here. If you can thank them from the council for taking on extra work and getting this done for us. I know we appreciate that. So thanks, Mark. Appreciate you. So with that, I will, if there's no other further questions for Asa and Conrad and Mr. Kipit, I will entertain a motion on item 10.3.
I would like to move that we approve the adoption of the McLennan Chism roadway impact fees slash, or dash, maximum fees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Angela, take your pick on the second. Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And show that unanimous. Item 10.4, Discuss and Consider Approving a Resolution Intended to Create a 90-Day Cooling Off Period After an Item Has Been Defeated by the City Council Prior to Being Eligible for Reconsideration and Providing an Effective Date. Councilmember Day?
Thank you for bringing, for allowing me to put this on the agenda. This is something that came up. It's been occurring since I moved to the city of McLennan Chism, which was way back in 2017, which is really not so long ago. One of the things I realized that can be kind of a nightmare is somebody putting something on an agenda and not getting through. And then they just kind of keep putting that thing on the agenda time and time again, in the case of a defeat. And one of the things I find is very helpful sometimes is if there's some finality to a no vote, even if that finality is only for 90 days, right, to bring it back up before we put it back onto the agenda. So what I did was I actually researched Robert's Rules. I actually looked at English Common Law. I went way back. And I found some really interesting cases. This was actually brought up under, the Brexit vote was brought up because they kept bringing up the same question over and over and over again. And they said, hey, listen, we've got this rule that goes back to the 1600s, early 1600s. I don't remember the exact year anymore. They said, you can't just sit there and hit us with substantially the same question over and over and over and over again, demanding a different answer. At some point, we have to move on to new business. And so that was something I thought was interesting. We had a series of questions that were being asked repeatedly during the last session. And I felt that one of the things we could have benefited from was a 90-day cooling off period. And so this was, most of this is actually generated straight from my research into several cities that were adopting a Robert's Rules type approach to how to put in a cooling off period. And what it basically says is, you know, if we say no, don't put it back on the agenda for another 90 days. Let people talk about it and let the circumstances change. Now, if the circumstances change, you know, suddenly you're getting sued or something's happening, that changes things. And this boots it over to Conrad, who can then come to the city and say, you guys really need to consider this for the following reasons that you didn't have before you at that time. And so that's what this is designed to do, is really to just put in a cooling off period rather than just asking the same question and hoping for a different answer. Thank you.
Mr. Hala, so if there's a 90-day cooling off period and, you know, there is a change or something, or is there something that prevents another council member to come up and say, hey, we really need to talk about this again? I know there are changes in the circumstances, but, you know, if another council member or myself or somebody wants to bring something back, would there be any exceptions to this? Or is it, if it's 90 days, it's 90 days? Or is there a check and balance on it?
Absolutely, there are checks and balances. That's a good question. So Councilmember Day, in his infinite wisdom, did, you know, put this together. And his exquisite vernacular that he used, took that into account. So, because he did even ask me about it. One, for example, 51003 of the local government code, the mayor's right within four days. If he does a no later than the fourth day, puts them in writing, it's got to be reconsidered by the council. That's like, it never happened the first time. That's all taking account in there. Because we discussed it, there's no way that the city ordinance can vitiate state law. So that was one. And then we also went through, you know, defining the substantial change or exceptional circumstance, or however we phrase it in there, because Councilmember Day astutely, I mean, I actually learned a lot from the conversation. We were like, well, how are you going to define that? What is that going to be? In other words, when are those exceptions going to take place? And so you want to, you've got to be, and Mr. Asa will probably appreciate this, with contracts, the rules are very similar to ordinances and interpreting them. 311 of the government code is the Code Construction Act. It's a rulebook for judges when they're interpreting ordinances, statutes, regulations, et cetera, et cetera. And so sometimes when you do that, you want to be specifically vague, other times you want to be vaguely specific. So think about that for a little while. So we actually discussed these concepts. To, we wanted to have some room where you can use discretion and common sense and flexibility. But we also didn't want it to be just so wide open, you're just like, what else? Kind of, that type of thing. So that's, that's why Councilmember Day, I think, came up with what, so there's your checks and balances. One is state law or any other law that's, then also, two, it's the common sense. And then, which was, I think, was a great move with, by Councilmember Day. He put all the responsibility on to Conrad to bring it back. So it's all, you know, Conrad's fault.
Pretty good. Thank you. Councilmember Asa, do you have any questions, sir?
I was wondering if this doesn't pass.
It's going back on next session.
Asa with the comments. That's awesome. Councilmember McLennan, do you have anything? Good, sir?
It's my understanding that the only individuals that can put something on the agenda are us, which limits our ability to govern or interact if we limit ourselves from to 90 days. Maybe there is a cooling off period. I don't agree with three months. I think that's a really long time. Also, being against this like altogether, if there is something that is defeated, then we can put it on the agenda in the executive session to discuss if that particular member, you know, feels a certain way about it. So we don't have to limit ourselves and say that I'm going to restrict Councilman Asa 90 days from, from what he put on the agenda. So I err on the side of, of actually, you know, trying to understand and work with each member and not restricting them for three months to bring something that they may care about.
That's good. So with, with Councilmember Floyd saying that, I mean, does that fall back into what I was asking, where there are the opportunities? Because, you know, if his concern is 90-day window, it sounded like already in the answer, there would be exceptions or ways that it could come back on there. So I think, is 90 days just like a, it's not saying necessarily it's 90 days. It's just a benchmark. It doesn't necessarily mean you're just out of luck.
It does mean the 90 days. Yeah. Now, here, there's a couple of options, though. And so we might, and I think either one is going to probably reduce the amount of angst and headache. One is you can change the 90 days, maybe 30 days, 45, something like that. Now, that's one option. The second option, though, is you can simply add, no one is allowed, you can keep the 90 days, but no one is allowed to put it on there for action. Just add that really short prepositional phrase, for action. That way, it can be the single most controversial thing that we've ever had. And I understand, this McLennan Chism, we have some, every meeting is controversial. I get it, I get it. So just work with me here in my world. So you've got the most controversial topic, but everybody can breathe a sigh of relief because of this, the 90 days. It's not for action. It's only for discussion. So no action can be taken. So you can just add the prepositional phrase in there of for action. And that means, hey, look, we can discuss it and bring it back, like Councilmember Clinton said, bring it back in the executive session. You can talk about it. If everybody's good, then hey, at that time, you can bring it back at the end. And you can, I guess there's a third option, too. You can say for action and shrink it from, say, 90 to 45 or 60 or something like that.
So if it stayed 90 days and we bring it up for discussion only, and then we did take it into an executive session since there's no action, at that point in time during the discussion, you know, would that, would it violate any toma if we all agreed then or because that would be kind of taking action? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, how would we be able to convey in a discussion that we're all in an agreement that it might need to come back sooner?
Well, now here, and that's a fair question. The, you're hitting on something very important. What is prohibited is making decisions in executive session. Offering your opinion? I mean, part of the reason is like, okay, look, this is a very political topic, you know, Mayor Proten, or, you know, tell us why. Well, I'm for it and this is why. Or I'm against it and this is why. That's part of executive session, to be able to speak freely and share your ideas, thoughts, and opinions without doing, when outside with damage. For example, hey, you know what, we're entering this potential contract, you know, we've had whatever issues before, what are we going to do here? Well, you know what, my concern with these people, I do like the idea of this contract, blah, blah. You're able to free to say that and the other person on the other side doesn't hear that and it can't be used against you in negotiation. So I'm just giving you an example. So discussions and offering opinion, things like that. Now, sitting there going, okay, is everybody in favor of this? No. And that can be a very innocent thing. I've seen it happen. And in the course of 25 years, I can't even count how many times I've seen that happen accidentally. That is what is prohibited back in executive session, making a decision, offering opinions and things like that. That's part of the purpose of executive session. So you can offer your opinion more freely and more openly without a third party, say, for example, in the contract or a land sale, hearing that and using that against the city in negotiations. So what you're asking, it's a, it's a really good question, but that can happen in executive session. What you can do is afterwards is say, when you do the, like you did tonight, any action in relation to the executive session, somebody can say, hey, look, I want to make a motion to put whatever the 90-day cooling off period in, or 45, or whatever it is. I want to make a motion to put it on the agenda for that next meeting after that period, whatever that period is ends, if you want to do that.
Okay, I like that. Councilmember McLennan, did that kind of help out? Or do you have any more questions? Councilmember Brewer, do you have anything? Good, sir?
I'm just trying to wrap my head around the, the timing of, this is the city council may remove the restriction via two-thirds vote. Does that, when does that take place? Is that like after the item has been defeated? Do we take a vote then? Or when do we do that? That's a good question. Hala and I were talking about, so it's kind of a blanket thing there. But you're right, it does still give us the self-regulation aspect of saying, no, we would like to take it back up. Doesn't mean we're going to approve it, but we'll put it on the agenda again within that 90 days with the two-thirds vote, you know. So, and that's actually a pretty standard piece of language that I've found in many cities. So this is almost entirely borrowed from other cities, other municipalities. This is not just me. I was running it back and forth with Hala. But again, like I said, we were, I was reading Black's Law book and going through Robert's Rules and I was finding municipalities and putting it together. I just thought it was good, just a little history on it. I mean, the things just in our most recent session from prior to the election. Had Mud 1 going into Mud 2. That was voted on twice. One time we defeated it, then we brought it up again for reconsideration, then we approved it. You know, I felt that that needed a cooling off period. I would have wanted one there. The 13255 filing request was done twice, also in subsequent meetings. So this is, was kind of a way for me to tell the public, hey, we're listening. We don't want to just sit there and waterboard. The public would, we take a stand, we make a decision, and then we come back and we're, you know, we're shaking like Jell-O up here in the front trying to waiver on a question. At some point, no means, needs to mean no, at least for some duration. You know, and no has to have value. Unless the circumstances change or time has gone by and people come back to their senses and say, we really should reconsider that now. Let's put it back on there. And that was what this was intended to do. It's not intended to stop anybody from expressing something. If somebody wants to put something back on the dais just before the, before the council, get the two-thirds votes together, put it, get it voted on, and you'll have it on the next one. That was the intention of that.
Well, you know, I like that. And I agree, there's been many times I can look back as the council member that I wish I would have just had a little more time besides seeing it every other week. And I like knowing that other cities are doing this. I mean, it's, it sounds pretty standard. So with that, I'll go down to Mayor Proten. Do you have any questions or comments, sir?
I don't have any questions per se, but I'm starting to align myself with Councilmember McLennan on the time element. 90 days seems to be a little bit protracted. I've been talking to Mark Kipit regarding P and Z activity and the fact that they're, they're meeting once a month and I'm trying to accelerate that where they're having at least twice a month meetings. And so this kind of is attuned to that in the sense that 90 days seems to be protracted. I'm looking for more efficiency in government. I'm looking for a more rapid pace of when things are being done. Or when you are on a shorter time limit, it seems that we work harder towards problem solving. And so in that regards, I would, I would be looking at something along the lines of maybe 45 days. Would be, I'd be more in tune with that and be supportive of that. And the other side of that is, is that the petitioner has a certain level, and I'm going to get really beyond my my educational background, due process. to get really beyond my educational background, due process. And to some degree, I think we're limiting, you know, their ability to have that full due process being entertained by council. And when you protract this out to 90 days, I think there may be some damage there on their part. Maybe, it may not be in a monetary fashion, but in some cases it may be. And so shortening that time period, I think, would be beneficial for both parties.
So 45 days, in essence, would be three council meetings, if I'm doing the math in my head pretty quick. So if this went to a motion, Mr. Halla, would that in the move, if somebody wanted to say, I moved to approve that, 45 days, can they amend that motion at this time?
Yeah, I don't think we even had a motion.
Well, we haven't, I'm just, I'm asking, you know.
Somebody would start, make a motion to approve the ordinance. It's not going to use 45 days.
Right on, okay. Is there any other questions? We went down the line. So if there's no other questions, I will look to entertain a motion.
So we'll make a motion approving a resolution intended to create a 45-day cooling off period after an item has been defeated by the city council prior to being eligible for reconsideration and providing an effective date.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
With the second, is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Show that pass at 4-1. Item 10.5, discuss and consider action pursuant to researching and authorizing a dark sky ordinance covering both commercial and residential that could work for the city of McClendon Chism. Councilmember Day, you're up again, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor, for putting this on the agenda. In fact, I have a couple of agenda items here, it's great. This is an idea that comes back from the, from the days of our Economic Development Committee that I think ran from 2019 till about 2020, late 2020. And one of the ideas that was brought up by several of the members was the dark sky concept. And I've had the chance to go ahead and talk to Conrad a little bit and ask Conrad if he would be prepared to make some remarks on what that means and what the benefits and/or cost to the city would be. Conrad, would you go ahead and take it for us?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. The dark sky ordinance is, as Councilmember Day alluded to, is not something new discussed within the city. It actually is contained in goals that are found in the comprehensive plan. To actually become certified as a dark sky city is, takes a lot of work and time. It's probably a four-to-five-year process. And I don't know if that's what the council's looking for, to become certified as a dark sky, or if it's just to, to implement some of the procedures to provide the dark sky benefits to our city. So I would suggest that the council, if amenable, would allow staff to review and research and classify and provide a draft resolution at a further date, because that's what we do. And come back to you with something written down about the dark sky ordinance, about some of the things that we, when we can talk to you as we do our research, as well as other cities, as other, and as was mentioned earlier, I think by Councilmember Day as well, it's not the only, I'm sure that we're going to discover that other cities have done this exact same thing. And so we would research that, and we'd bring that, and we'd put together a resolution for you at a later date and bring this, so you can have a hard copy discussion of a draft order, draft resolution for this.
Thank you very much, Conrad. Yeah, that's effectively what I was hoping to get out of this, was a discussion or bringing up what this is. And again, it is in the comprehensive plan, but we hadn't really breathed it up here at the dais. And so I wanted to, you know, it's, you've got to speak it into existence. And so, I mean, I'm very interested in seeing what staff can put together in terms of an idea that would, they think would fit for the city, and possibly put together an ordinance that we could use for the city. I mean, right now, we used to come out of planning, or not planning, Economic Development Committee meetings, and we used to just kind of sit out here and congregate. And this is before the fire station was over here, so Chief, long before your light, your luminosity went up like a pillar across the city. Yeah, well, they would shut off the lights, and we'd still sit out here, and it was beautiful. You could hear the crickets, and you could see the stars and the whole thing. And of course, you could see, you could always identify Sonoma Verde by his, again, a big pillar of light that was going up. And it was very obvious where they were. And when I would point it out to people, I'd say, well, there's Sonoma Verde. Well, how do you can tell? Look at the light coming up. And sure enough, so this was one of the things that effectively you would be instructing people just kind of at a rudimentary level. Don't, you don't want the light pollution coming up and impacting the stars and the moon, and it, of course, has a dramatic effect on nocturnal wildlife in the area. So your owls, your hawks, and things are moving around at night. So we're very, very interested, or at least I would, I'm very, very interested in seeing what they could put together to see if it would be beneficial to the city. I also think we should get it in place prior to the development and the businesses coming in, so we know what works for us, and we can say, this is what we want you to do, if this is something that we think works. And so I'm interested to see what the staff has to do. So I hope that the council will move to empower them to do this.
I agree, I mean, it's in the comprehensive plan as well. And I know, again, Mr. Kipit's here, and I know he puts some work in on the comprehensive plan. I know with Strategic Plan 2050, there's just so many different things that, you know, we're looking at to protect every little aspect of Rockwall, and I know dark skies are certainly one of them. Mr. Easter, do you have anything to add, sir?
No, I think this is a good idea to start looking into, and I think there's some economic benefit to having these sorts of accoutrements around the community here. Kind of goes along with the walkways and the paths and connecting and everything. This is what we kind of moved out here for, and to the extent we can retain that, I think it'll enhance, you know, property values and make this a much more desirable place to live. So I think it's a good idea.
Right on. Mr. McClendon, do you have anything, sir? No. Mr. Brewer?
No, I think it's worth looking into. Certainly, it was in the comprehensive plan, something that we can check off that we've accomplished, another check mark on that comprehensive plan. And I'd be curious to see how this affects, like, some HOAs that already have lights set up, but not necessarily dark sky, but are we going to be imposing on them a cost and what that cost would be?
Could possibly be something that might be happened to be grandfathered, I don't know. We'd want to pass on a cost to somebody who's, especially a place that's been around for a minute, that would definitely be something that had to be addressed. This was your deal, so you've commented. Mayor Pro Tim, do you have anything to add on the dark skies, good sir?
There might be a cost consideration if you're trying to grandfather this stuff in. However, what I'd be interested in is looking to see if there are any state grants that might be available to pursue this and assist us in funding this kind of activity, and so that's where my interest lies.
So Councilmember Day, would it be, well, I'm going to go back to you, Conrad, in one second. Councilmember Day, would it be something that you would want to, you know, work with staff a little more to come up with some sort of guideline or ordinance, or looking into grants and everything else?
I'm happy to help in any way I can, but I'm talking to Conrad, my, I feel like he's really got a good handle on this. He's got experience with it, he's done it, I believe you did it, at one of your previous assignments. So, I mean, I think he knows what to do and where to go with it, and I think in a lot of ways, we'll be, if I try to get in front of him, I feel like he'll run me over. So I want to see, I want to see what he could do, and I'll be there to back him up if he needs it. But I think he, I think this is a ball he could run.
That's a side we do not want to see. Conrad, do you have anything, sir?
Okay, yes. I sort of held off, and I was, I was interested to, not to put Councilmember Brewer on the spot, but my experience in the past, our police don't like dark sky ordinances. The robbers come out, the bad guys come out, and crime goes up. So the peaceful feeling of having, having that is true, as Councilmember Easter says, that there is that, I mean, you look at the stars, you can see the stars and the moon, where all the light pollution, you see very few stars and stuff like that, you stay different places. But I've heard multiple police like light, like to have more light to get the bad guys. So it's a trade-off, because it is the peaceful feeling and having the resolve and things like that, but then also it's sort of inviting, that you can't see some guys that shouldn't be around and doing things that they shouldn't be doing, so. But you'll, we'll put all that stuff in, so you can review it and see if it's valid or not.
Thank you, Conrad. With that, I will look at entertaining any sort of motion that you may want to make on this, Paul, unless you have anything else.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we authorize the staff to investigate and research the creation of a dark sky ordinance, what that would look like for the city of McClendon Chism.
Do I have a second?
Second.
With a second, is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Show that unanimous. Item 10.6, discuss and consider action pursuant to establishing a transfer station for, at minimum, green waste within the city. Councilmember Day, this is your meeting tonight, sir.
Yes, sir, it sure appears to be. This really isn't an endorsement of the idea as much as it is just simply an opportunity to talk about the idea with my colleagues. It was very obvious after the storm that there's a, that there is a strong need, desire, I don't know, you know, demand, I guess you could say, for a place for refuge, refuse on this side of the lake to be able to get into the system and get taken out here. It turns out CWD takes all their stuff to Garland. Garland, of course, is a recipient of a lot of this garbage, and they deal with it. So effectively, we're dealing with them. There's no place on this side of the lake to take it, there's no transfer station. We, for the last month, have been a de facto transfer station right out here. People have been dropping off their garbage, their waste, their refrigerator sometimes. You know, it's all been in there. We currently have a CWD doing this. And so it just dawned on me, I said, we really should at least have a conversation about whether or not having at least a green waste transfer station, what does that even look like? Is it something that the city should even talk about getting into or investing time? Or is, you know, how do people feel about this? The reason why I bring up green waste is because when you bring up green, people immediately don't worry about it. It doesn't have the stink, it doesn't have the smell, it doesn't have the flies, it doesn't have the diapers, and it doesn't have all the other stuff. It's, you can do mulching and do all kinds of things with it. When you get into the other stuff, the people start thinking about, you know, the crows and stuff crawling around, and the stench and the stink and things like this. So anyways, I just thought I'd bring it up. It just seems like there's a, there's an obvious demand for this, and so I decided to drop it on the agenda because, I mean, obviously, we've been doing it, and these bins are full, I mean, you've got to know the stats better than I do, but these things are full constantly. And I have a feeling if we had some type of transfer station in the area, it would be used constantly. Just wanted to throw that out there. Conrad, do you have any thoughts? I know you and I talked about it briefly.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that evaluating for the commercial haulers, most of the county commercial haulers go to Garland to their transfer station. And basically, a transfer station, if you don't know, it's just a, just a metal building with a concrete slab floor where you go and dump all your stuff on the floor. Well, you show up first, and there's a hut with a scale in the, in the ground, and they weigh your truck, weigh your commercial vehicle, or trash truck, or whatever you're driving, and then you go dump all your refuse, all your green waste, all whatever you have, and then you come out by the hut, and it weighs you again, and they charge you appropriately based on that. And that's how we get charged as a city for all the, all the trash that CWD picks up. And they just drop it, and then what do they do to, with it? I mean, because it's sitting, they have some heavy equipment that pushes it in, potentially rail cars if it's by a spur, or they have trucks, or there's sometimes they have compactors that can pack the trash and stuff. So they move it out to a landfill somewhere, and there's costs there, too. But that's all worked into your cost per weight and what you've dumped. So evaluating that, and evaluating the costs and whether there's a need through the commercial people, I mean, I think I sent you a thing where at the landfill, where there was all these, these vehicles just in line because of the storm, and it was a long process. That's, is there a need the rest of the year for that? I mean, or is it just an immediate thing? A lot of the green waste, lots of times, go to wastewater treatment facilities where they mix it with the solids. They let the solids dry out and mix that, those solids with, with, with the green waste to make manure type, commonly lovingly known as humanure, which is used and does great in gardens and other places. But it's something that they do that and then make it available for their residents, so they can use it for their gardens, or their, whatever they need it for. So we don't have a wastewater treatment facility. North Texas, MWD has, takes care of that for everybody on our side of the lake that has, that has sanitary sewer. But a lot of times, that's where it collects those, too, to do those things. But I guess another is just analyzing where we are, where we stand, is it something that's needed 24/7, 365, or is it something that is storm-based, or is it where we are and the costs and other things? We could definitely, as staff, look into that as well and bring you back information on that.
Okay. Councilmember Easter, do you have anything, sir?
Yeah, I've got a quick question on it. On the CWD proposal, if, do we know where the green waste would be going? Because if it's just going to municipal landfill, I don't know how this really benefits it. But if it was actually diverted to someplace where it's being reused in the manner that you just described, that would be desirable, I would think, for that purpose, because right now, we've got, at least my understanding is, we've got solid waste, and then we've got these, you know, the recyclables, and I don't know where those are going. But it would be nice if we're trimming trees or whatever, to be able to utilize that green waste for something beneficial. And I think, you know, particularly for folks that have a smaller yard, but you don't, might not be able to get rid of all this stuff, I think it'd be very beneficial to those folks, kind of like we have out here, at least with respect to these containers, to be able to dispose of yard waste and that sort of thing, rather than throwing it in the garbage. But again, it comes down to where's it going, and how much is it going to cost?
In our CWD contract, there is no identification of where they bring the green waste. We definitely could ask and get you back that information. Typically, generally, normally, the, if, well, the recycling company, I mean, it used to all almost exclusively go to China until five to 10 years ago, and we had that big issue with, with them not accepting, and we're not giving, we have contaminated loads and stuff like that. And that's a big thing with recycling, is contaminated loads. Even a pizza box, where you think, oh, a pizza box, it's cardboard, throw it in there. But the grease that the pizza left contaminates the entire load that you put in your blue can or whatever to do it. So I mean, one thing contaminated everything. So I'm sure the CWD, and again, I'll find this, attempts to make money out of recycling, and they bring it to recycling places, whether it's them making money or somebody else, that's where they bring it. They don't combine it unless there's contaminated loads.
Do you have anything else? Councilmember McClendon, do you have anything on this one? Councilmember Brewer? Mayor Pro Tim?
I had a little bit of discussion on this topic with Councilmember Day, and I had concerns about cost, I had concerns about contamination specific, because I saw the abuse that occurred out here almost immediately after the storm. And so having that separation of green waste versus other waste, you lost a distinction, there was none. And so I would have a lot of concerns on that point. The other point was where would we have a location center? And it's certainly not going to be in City Hall, they don't want to have trash being picked up in City Hall with the containers. I had been thinking about, you're two acres down off the 276, though, Chief. Any, had you ever considered this or thought about it, or do you want to keep that to yourself, or do you want to?
Do you want to? Do you want to?
Do you want to share that with us?
I'm out there, so currently.
What specifically are we doing that property? And I'm just opening it up for conversation. I'm not trying to usurp your training facility. Sure enough.
We don't house out there for a month. But if you're running out, I'll...
Ron, do you have anything you want to add on this one, Councilmember Day?
No, I mean, that's the same thing. I mean, I'm not endorsing or saying one. It just was, it just was an idea that I had. I said, this is something that I think we should be talking about because there's no place to put anything. And one of the first things that happened after the storm, which we're going to come into when we talk about 10.7, I don't want to over-anticipate that. But the first thing I remember, I said to you, I said, if we don't get bins out here, people are going to take all this trash and start throwing it in other people's fields. And we had to move quick. And sure enough, I already started seeing it happening. Fortunately, we got in front of it, and I think we got most of that prevented, that type of action. That's the first thing people start to do. So instead of dumping illegally, they can dump for small fee at our, (laughter) at our transfer station?
Yeah, that's going to make them not dump illegally, so.
No, that's it. That was, it's not an endorsement one way or the other. I would like to see if it could be done, what it would look like. What does that business look like? Is it something that the city has an interest in checking out? Because Rockwell's not doing it, Fede's not doing it, Roy City's not doing it, the county's not doing it, Terrell's not doing it. Stuff's got to go somewhere, and it's all going to Garland. And I think it's something that through an arrangement, even with the city of Garland, we could probably put something together. But what does that look like? I have no idea. I have no idea.
Well, I'll look at, if you want to make a motion on how you want the staff to work on this, I'll definitely take a motion on this.
Yeah, I mean, I would move to allow the staff, just as before, to research what a transfer station looks like, maybe to investigate what's going on over at the city of Garland, to see how we can plug into that, so we're not re-imbiting the wheel. And to see if this is something that is, there's an interest in, let alone be feasible. And if it's feasible and there's interest and it's revenue generating, I think that might be the three checkboxes we're looking for. So I guess now I'm kind of getting off what my motion is. My motion is to authorize you guys, is authorize the staff to research the creation of a transfer station for the city of McLennan-Chisholm.
And I'm glad you changed that to the motion. I was getting worried for Angela's hand. Do I have a second?
Second.
With a second, is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make a comment, is that if we were to put together this facility, that it would be open for the general public of those in the county, not just people out of McLennan-Chisholm.
My understanding, the Garland model, and maybe correct me on this, Conrad, but Garland residents don't pay, they just pay the tonnage. But if you're from out of Garland, I know that when I went on their website, if you don't have a Garland address, you have to pay a fee plus tonnage. So...
However they want to arrange the fee schedule. And I'm just saying, open this up to other people in the county.
Oh, yeah. I think this is an opportunity to bring money into the city. Yeah, I think this is a fee generating source, potentially.
Yep.
Any further discussion? We'll go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 We're going to show that one unanimous. We'll go to 10.7, discussion of McLennan-Chisholm fire, city staff, council members regarding emergency responses and lessons learned from the May through June 2024 storms, fires, and flooding that have impacted the city. And we'll go with Councilmember Day one more time.
I promise this is the last agenda item I've got. It's the last agenda item, anyway. Yeah, this...
They did nominate a tiny waiting list for your...
Yeah. Forty-five days. Hey, no, this, of course, is just kind of more of a, so I work in education. One of the things that we do whenever we do anything major in education is we ask ourselves the question, did that make sense? Did it give us a result? Can we learn from it? Can we improve? In other words, self-evaluate. And so what I wanted to do was sit down and have everybody kind of give an evaluative response to what happened. I invited the chief. I'm glad that Jim came out here. I called him last week, and he made a special effort to be here. I appreciate him greatly. But we got Conrad here, we got the mayor here, the whole councils here. So I think it's a good opportunity to say, where were our wins? Where were our losses? What could we have done better? What was really successful? What did we expect to work, and it just wasn't the right thing at all that we've over-invested in? What should we have had instead to make that? You know, do we have the right tools? And these types of questions. And so that's really what this is, is about finding out information, self-evaluating, and improving the cities and the cities' response, so that the next time something like this happens, and I felt like we did a pretty good job, but we can always be better, right? And so that's my philosophy on this and my motivation for putting this on here. And actually, I would really like to start, since Jim's here. I mean, Chief, would you like to?
Yeah. Well, first, thank you, Chief, for everything you did during the storms. And we'll go ahead and start with you, and we'll go down the line.
All right, here we go. So I do want to commend council and everybody that participated in that event because it's...
Chief, you got to go there because you're going to...
It's the first thing. It's...
He'll pick up?
He'll pick up?
Okay. You're good then. You got to talk loud.
All right. We'll talk very loud, but I think the mic's working. I can hear myself. That's bad. So one thing I would say is thanks, council. You know, we've had a couple incidents in this city since the six and a half years that I've been here. And to see the response to different council members, mayor, you got to really see, spend a day in the life of a, I know you were a volunteer back in the day, but what we do here in MC and see how your troops and everybody operates, and how our mission is to really protect the citizens of this community. And so you got to witness some of that. But just the communication that went on, it was great to see. You know, it takes a team. Many hands make light work. I believe in that. And with council and everybody that participated did help out. But I think the city did one good thing already. And the thing is communications. Any debrief that we have, any incident that we have, we will always find the number one item, issue to be is communications. We always strive to be the best and understand we will never be the best, but we continue to work at making communications better. And by the city approving, council approving, the tech, again, there's so many GOVs. There's a ClearGov, MyGov, so we went with Text MyGov. Text ClearGov. That's the app that we can have people buy into, or not buy into, but everybody sign in, and they can opt out if they wish, correct? So that right there is one good thing, I think, because nothing against NICSIL, but we like to be able to have that little bit more control with our citizens and being able to put some important information out that really affects them and not Dallas, or Plano, or Fort Worth, where after the NICSIL report went out, I was getting calls from the city of Dallas. I got calls from people in Dallas, Garland, Plano, Frisco, McKinney, Sunnyvale, Saxon, thinking the world was coming to an end here in MC. And so it gets a little further out, and then people push it out. So I think the city, the council did one, that was a great move, saying, hey, let's invest some money into this and have our own communication network that however the mayor, council sets it up to where we have so many people that can input. You know, if it's having the captains on duty to where if they have a large-scale incident, we have a major accident that shuts down 205, they can put out a little blurb to let people know, hey, be careful of traffic. So, but other than that, I mean, the responses were great. We did everything we could with what we had that day. That morning, I up-staffed, I held over. About 10 hours, 12 hours worth of overtime to up-staff additional apparatus because we were getting double-tap, triple-tap. We had several roads, Pullen Road, Clutch Road, Smith Road, and I think even parts of Lee Road where we had tree debris that was actually blocking roadways. So that becomes, you know, top priority because we would need to have access just in case any other calls come in. So I think we, you know, our troops did an outstanding job that day. They were whipped during that morning, doing everything. And then the two fire calls, luckily, the one in Heath, we didn't have to do much. And then they went and had to do some work in Roy City to assist them on the church fire there that unfortunately happened. But they did an outstanding job. We always debrief, what can we do better? You know, making sure that we get assignments lined out a little bit clearer, you know, having the staff to be able to do what we did. But other than that, one of the other issues we had was road flooding. We have no barricades. Contacted county a couple times, mentioned to them that we need assistance from Rowden Bridge. Eventually, I've got somebody from Rowden Bridge because I think they could tell by my message and my voice that I was not pleased with the response I was getting. They did eventually show up, but myself and the engine crew was out of service technically because we were wanting to keep citizens safe on Edwards Road because we had pretty good swift-moving water a couple feet deep across Edwards Road. But one of the things we've already reached out and have done is bought barricades. Correct me if I'm wrong, Conrad. So we now, as a city, will have some of our own barricades, and we'll look and assess, see what else we need, to probably buy some more. We have storage places to put it. So it would be the fire personnel, since we don't have Rowden Bridge or Streets Department, and code compliance and anybody else, we could go out and actually barricade stuff off to where we don't have to tie up staff and apparatus on a non-emergent situation. Emergent, but not emergent, taking away, you know, blocking the roadway. So we've already done some things like that. But other than that, I'd be happy to hear any criticism that might come our way if we need to, that we need to work on.
You won't get any criticism from me. I applauded the efforts when I showed up that morning to learn that you brought in or held over a whole shift. And they, so they worked already their 48 hours and probably worked probably about 12 more. So, you know, we definitely thank them for that. You know, I don't know if you guys want to, when it becomes your turn, comment on everything, I guess. But that's where I would, that's what I would say. I mean, you guys were top-notch. Mr. Easter, I'll take it to you on any recaps you want to do. And I honestly hope for no other storms to see you in rain boots again would harm my eyesight. So with that, Mr. Easter.
It all worked out pretty well. But no, I think it was a group effort. And just to go through, and kind of like Gina mentioned today, that everybody tried to figure out what to do, how to help you. And you were all over everywhere trying to get the power back on and trying to make sure people's lives were disrupted to the minimum. And so I thought it was a very good response, considering it wasn't super-coordinated with the whole thing. One thing I would like to do as a result of this is put together a list of folks with chainsaws so we can go out and try to clear some of these roads because I was unaware that this was going on. Had I known, I'd have been out there too. And trying to get those branches off ASAP, I think, is important, particularly coupled with the water. And then speaking of the water, I know that there's a couple residents that were adversely impacted over off dancing waters, ironically enough, that we need to kind of go back and figure out where that's at. And as far as the lessons learned as we're going forward with some of this development, to be a little bit more mindful of where houses are put and where the floodplains are on things. And so, not that there was mistakes in the past, but I think this recent experience kind of highlights the import of, you know, making sure we know where the water's going to go when it comes. So...
Okay.
I'm...
I'm going to go all the way around.
Yeah, and these are just some thoughts off the top of what's left in my head.
No, but I appreciate it. And I agree with the chainsaws. I have never held a chainsaw until the next morning. And why the fire crew left me in charge of a chainsaw, I'll never know. But I, yeah, yeah. Lucky to have all the limbs, no pun intended. Councilmember McLennan, do you have any recap from the storm?
Bravo Zulu. You know what that means? Job well done to you and the men. We do need to be cautious. There's a thin line between allowing the emergency professionals to do their job and helping as leaders and citizens. So we just need to be mindful about that. And we rely on the professionals to guide us when it comes to us stepping in and helping.
Every situation that comes across, there's never going to be a perfect plan for it. And you always have to adapt and overcome to whatever the circumstances may be. And I will say, the fire department did a fabulous job with that. The mayor did a fabulous job communicating to the public, getting in touch with the different representatives for power for the trouble we had with the dam. I think that's to be applauded. And I think we can take, take some of that experience of what happened and apply it to maybe another chapter in the emergency plan book. Say, this is what we did, this is what worked. And certainly having contacts for power and all those folks would be handy because if you're not here, somebody needs to have that book, right? So, that's all.
I'll go ahead and do my turn since I'm next in line. So again, awesome job, fire department. And I agree with Councilmember McLennan, yes, everyone stays in their lane. I don't believe anyone crossed the lanes from what I saw. And I'll let you recap that part. What I saw was the fire department running what they needed to do on the emergency basis. I saw myself at the EOC. I saw council members volunteering their time as self-servant leaders to the citizens. I mean, we identified, as Councilmember Easter had mentioned just now, the crazy amount of water that comes out on the backside of dancing waters, which I know two of the members are here that are impacted by that the most. And that has not fallen off the radar, just so you know. But, you know, to see Councilmember Day out there at 3:00 in the morning, staying away from his family, to be out here to volunteer, it was, Mayor Pro Tim making the meetings, Jerry Brewer up on top of the dam as rain was coming down on us. It just showed that whether it's your lane or not, to always go above and beyond is never a thing that I would ever say negative things about. I mean, I learned more about Encore, dams, rain, Soil Water Conservation District. And I'll also say, I was echoed with a reminder of what teamwork really is. This team came together in such a way that I don't think you knew who the leader was. I mean, Mayor Pro Tim was doing things. Councilmember Day was, I mean, two of them are here today. I can't imagine you could not see the concern on Councilmember Day's face. I just got chills. I mean, Councilmember Brewer was in his neighborhood with a chainsaw. I saw the pictures. I mean, everyone came out on this council, and it was amazing. And I apologize, my daughter keeps calling me. She's the only one who can ring through the phone at any time. me. She's the only one who can ring through the phone at any time. Um, but, um, you know, it was, it was amazing. Um, I, I have nothing negative to say about it. I mean, up to and including citizens, uh, getting word out. You talked about communication. Uh, I could text every HOA. Uh, I, I, I think I blew up the Kipitz phone, Gina's phone. Uh, there wasn't a person that I wasn't looking to for advice, help and guidance because I had no playbook. All I knew is I, I could fall back on the people up here and the people out there. And that's what made McClain and Chisholm, McClain and Chisholm because McClain and Chisholm during that was one. And it set the tone that we can still and maintain being one. And, and I was proud of them. Councilmember Day?
Very well said, sir. I'll try. I don't know what to say. I mean, well, I, so one of the things that people are bringing up, and I think it's, it's an interesting thing. I actually have it written down. We don't have a public works department. So, we were either going to do it or, or the citizens had to do it completely on their own, right? It was going to be one or the other. And we worked together with the citizens. They worked with us. The HOAs worked with us. Uh, I would say that we probably got a high-five 20 times for every time we got a thumbs down on something. I think that's a pretty good ratio. I don't know. You know, that's the kind of, if you get a YouTube video with 95% likes, it's not too bad, I guess. Right? Um, some of the stuff that I noticed was, uh, in terms of, I suppose reliving the whole thing, which I, I definitely can and still do in my mind. I, I was out at the dam recently. Uh, it's still leaking underneath there. It is, you know, is it safe in a technical sense? Yeah, it's safe. It is. You know, I, I, I agree with the, the assessment made by the, uh, by the investigator, but it's, needs to be fixed. It's, it's not there yet. So, we're, we're working hard on that. We're going to hustle on that. And we've come together and we've worked really hard. Some of the other things I've observed though, and I've talked to Chief about these things is, is that, uh, the question he brought up barricades, uh, flooded roads were another big issue. And I understand that, that you guys have a semi-permanent lake during, during the wintertime up there in, uh, Sonoma Verde, right? What do you call it? Lake La Verona? So, uh, we've discovered that there are many such waterways in this town. And, uh, and so there's these topographical deficiencies that seem to be set up repeatedly. And of course, Asa's going to know where I'm going with this. We have these areas where these things are developed that should have proper drainage. They don't have proper drainage. We've got a, I mean, there's the Putmans right there looking right at us. So wear them blue for water. Um, um, yeah. So the, I, I pulled up to actually look at, I think I was there to support you on the, on the Encore thing. And I, I immediately assumed you were there for them. Um, because there was sheet flow coming off their property. The sheet flow was what? Like six inches deep?
Yeah.
But it was, I mean, but it was, it was, it was about six inches deep and with, uh, with extreme, what we would call extremely high velocity. So very erosive. In fact, their backyard is, half of it is eroded out. And so I, you know, I went out there, I said, oh my gosh, this is crazy. And then the second time it rained, I went right over to their house. I already had permission from him. But I said, you know, if it rains again, can I just go right in your backyard? And so I did what an old school environmental geologist does, which is jumps out. I jumped out of my truck and I hiked straight up the stream, which is what you do. You find the source. And I took it right up to the pond, right on the back end of their property. So, and I filmed and documented that. So hopefully we can get that resolved. But that is, that is a serious concern that it's going to impact your properties. And, and, uh, I wish the city had a, had more tools to be able to help you with. But, you know, those are the things that I'm looking for is those kinds of tools. Uh, I have a lot of topographical concerns, uh, throughout the city. I noticed that there's a furrow just over where they're developing new homes for another developer. I don't want to mention the developer, but they're building homes right at the bottom of that furrow. And I'm just sitting there saying, are we not learning our lessons? You know, the, the ground is going to settle. There's going to be all these different issues. And those of, that are over in Chisholm Crossing are more, it's a more seasoned development. You know, things have been able to settle for a little bit. It's not brand new. We know that these problems get set up. And so we need to probably look at some of these topographical concerns. We talked about bonds. In fact, I brought that up with Conrad. If you recall the conversation, that they hold a bond for two years. And I said, can we extend that bond for say 10 to make sure that the topographical stuff is going to work out, you know, before they walk away and then leave it with the HOA and take off? Um, I don't, I don't know what this, what this looks like. I just know that we've got problems. And so I recognize these things out there. So, uh, do we need to own sump pumps? Sump pumps on Amazon are about 250 bucks. Right? Well, to run a sump pump, you need a generator. That's about 1,100 bucks. Right? So if you get a little, you know, two and a half kilowatt Honda generator, you hook it up to a sump pump and you put it out at Lake La Verona, it'll pump it out. It'll do good. It'll do a pretty good job. So those are the kinds of things that we could talk about. Uh, I noticed that there were, there were a couple of folks that needed, they didn't have power and they had medical concerns. They had devices they needed to operate. The city didn't have any electrical, I don't believe, Chief, that we have any generators to land. So, you know, he didn't have one. So if he had to respond, he would actually have to take them to a hospital, right? If you had to respond, that would, that would be what you would normally do.
We actually had three members in our community that are reported, um, that I put their names in at the EOC. Once I put their names in at the EOC, then they're registered and the Sheriff's Department and our Fire Department are then given notification and they are checked on every so many hours by both departments. Uh, and I entered three names that I knew of, uh, off the bat. So I agree, that's something we definitely need to make sure. We know who in the community is at, at risk so I can automatically just have those names ready for the EOC.
So, and I'm going to go ahead and keep picking on the Putmans since they're here. Um, if you're living in their home during this supposed recent event, just kind of give you, they were kind of at the epicenter of every bad thing that happened in this city, right? Would I be wrong? There, there's definitely evidence, even though there's, there's no direct eyewitness evidence of it, but we see meteorological evidence that there was an EF0 to EF1 tornado that went right along that area where the, uh, where the lines were cut. So they lost power. They had a tornado rip up their, their backyard. They had a flood come through their yard. The dam almost failed in front of them. This is cats and dogs living together kind of situation. Things are getting kind of crazy, apocalyptic for them. And, and so they were, they were kind of the postage stamp for everything that was going on there. Like if you want to know it was happening, that was where you went. That was the litmus test. Um, so I'm glad that they're here. Every single time the power went on, but what would happen in the trees? Catch fire. You know, you'd start hearing arcing. I mean, this was, this is one of those things where we were just constantly running around trying to solve the problems best we could. We were, we were working with Encore. We were, and a lot of people forget that RCH had two main, water main breaks just the week before. So we were just, I mean, trial by fire. We were baptism by fire, hardcore, as we were going through this. And I think we've all kind of come out of this. We learned a lot about public works.
If I can echo one thing with you real quick, Councilmember Day, not to interrupt and I apologize. The reason it was paramount that the citizens helped as much as they did and the council members were out on scene with Encore, it wasn't because we were trying to be Encore specialist. But if we wouldn't have been out there doing those things and hearing where the pops were, where I could relay that to my contact at Encore, the power wouldn't have been fixed in days. Uh, Rockwall had weeks of some people without power because of the amount of vegetation. Encore could not have as many people out there. Uh, I mean, and I was working with a member from North Carolina, Odessa. Uh, they, we know the vegetation. We know the backyard better. And so I could have, Judge Russo was at one spot listening for a pop. As a matter of fact, to y'all's neighbor. Um, then I was at another location. And so we would all coordinate when we knew the power was going to be closed, which means on and their, their world. So it was very paramount, uh, with the council members that came out to help and listen for these pops and stuff because had we not done that, we would not have been able to find the power that night. And by us doing that, 34 homes got restored with power. Unfortunately, at the risk of five homes losing power. But the way Encore works, as I found out, is their goal is to have as many online as possible. So to sacrifice five to give 34, happened to be the case. But the very next morning, Encore sent nine trucks to that neighborhood in Glen Acres behind the Putmans area. And they had power that day. And it was all because of coordinated work of, like I said, going above and beyond. And I don't think it was people stepping outside of their, their wheelhouse. It was just people who cared about people. Back to you, sir.
So, uh, I, I think those are some of the lessons learned and some of the things that we could probably start looking into is some type of, I'm very concerned with this topographical problems. I mean, these, these little lakes are becoming a serious problem throughout the city. So we could fix it. We could ameliorate it with sump pumps temporarily, put a generator on it, clean the water out. Sometimes they have a, a float on it, so it'll shut off automatically. But that's a, that's a temporary thing. We're, we're probably going to have to start looking at permanent solutions. Lake La Verona should not exist. Uh, when we're driving into Chisholm Crossing on the day that, in fact, I detected that the dam was having problems that very day, um, I couldn't get in because the water was what? Two and a half feet deep? Not, and that's not even going to your house. This was coming into Chisholm Crossing on my way to your house. Yeah. On my way to your house to go and check. So, I mean, it was, it was, it was crazy. Yeah, it was over the hydrant. Yeah. And so we didn't have the barricades. So I think that's a great call that we got the barricades. I put it in reverse and I told somebody else, I would go there if I was you. And I drive a four-wheel drive truck. So I went around the other way and got in. So we, we need to find a way to make sure that if we don't lose both entrances, people can get in and out, you know, that kind of stuff. So I, I, I saw those things. I'm going to keep it in mind. I'm going to probably work with Asa on some of this topographical stuff that's really concerning to me.
Mayor Pro Tim, sir?
I, I think much of what I wanted to say has been covered, uh, very extensively. So, uh, I appreciate Paul's comments and his insights on, on what's been going on here, uh, at a more detailed level that, you know, it's all of a sudden risen to a level of concern that I have a, Lake La Verona, I guess is what it is. If those can be multiplied throughout the city and, uh, that's something that really has to be looked into where in the past, it's just been, you know, we'll just wait it out. Um, beyond that, you know, being, I, I was more intimately involved with the, with the dam situation than, than the Encore situation and the flooding in the backside of Glen Acres. Um, but that being said, what I saw coming out of the Fire Department, and I, I know you don't need any more accolades, but you're going to get one or two more, is the, uh, the teamwork that was offered by the, the folks involved coming out of the Fire Department at all times of the, the day and night. And those guys were up on the hill and they were working hard and in the middle of the rain, in conjunction with some of the folks up here. And so I applaud all those folks who were up there. I learned a lot. I learned a lot about dam structures, soils, government agencies. I learned a lot about beavers, you know? Learned a lot about beavers and what destruction they can, they can induce. And I don't like beavers any longer. I used to like them, but I don't like them any longer. So I have, I have, you know, disdain for beavers at this point in time. And I think we're going to be eradicating a few more over there, is my understanding, after the TCEQ report. So, uh, in that regard, I love the team effort. I, I know it was a little bit haphazard on our end. You guys are the professionals over there. On our end, it was, it was, uh, it was just kind of fabricated, put together and, uh, but it worked well because it was, uh, it was, is a purpose that, uh, we were all looking for to, to help resolve. Um, I, I think in the future we can maybe conjure up different emergency situations and maybe have some class study if that's possible. We may even be having that on Thursday. I think we have an EMS meeting and maybe some of this will go over. But we can certainly, uh, put into, into motion, uh, a little bit more control if we do have this, uh, happen again. And, you know, I, I've been here seven years and I've never seen so many disasters happen in such a short period of time. And the reality between dams and, and storms, and we've had winter storms as well, freezes. So, yeah, there, there is a, a place for all of us to serve. I think we serve very, very well up on the hill, I'm saying the hill, the dam, uh, and you guys over with, uh, over in Glen Acres. Uh, I think we can explore and discuss this even, even further and maybe make assignments within the council, uh, in terms of prioritizing a pair, so to speak, to go to communications, a pair to, uh, inform citizens or, or, or work the road system, uh, below the damming, maybe do some traffic control in conjunction with, with, uh, the Fire Department. So I think we can, uh, in the future, maybe define some roles for each of us on a voluntary basis to fill and thereby relieve manpower on your end to really do, do the harder, harder lifting. So we can, we can certainly, uh, put something like that together in the future. Um, beyond that, I applaud the citizens. There were a lot of concerned citizens that came through and rarely did I see anybody go hyperbolic. I mean, they were given, you know, as much information as we had and, and, and I think they appreciated that. And we tried to relay all their concerns, uh, this, and, and they would pass that word on to others. And so I really appreciated the cooperation, cooperation that we got from citizens in the community. Uh, it just worked well for everybody. And they knew we were doing our best and, you know, we were relying on them to, to get the word out as well.
Yeah. Nothing to add to that. That's the only thing I would say is, Chief, when it comes back to you, answer with, uh, Mayor Pro Tim on that. I think that'd be a great idea to maybe come up with something where, when we have these situations, apparently they don't happen all the time, but they can happen. And if everyone has a role to play, I mean, we have an EOC at the fire station, you know, maybe have someone there, uh, while I'm at the EOC at the county. And everyone has a role, but we'll let you close with that in a second. Um, Conrad, I'll take it to you from the city staff side of with y'all's input. And then we'll close with the chief and we'll wrap this place up.
All right. Real quickly, um, yes, I was out of town during this, this event. Um, however, I would be averse to not mention the multiple cities, um, the North Texas Municipal Water District, the, um, through the metroplex neighbors that we have, they, they all were being affected and they all called or emailed or, or connected with me asking if we need any help. Um, knowing that we have no equipment, we have no public works, we have no, I mean, so they, they stretched out their arms to, I, I mean, to communicate with us and ask for, for assistance. And the chief and I have talked about some of that. Um, there are, um, Councilmember Brewer stated it very well that, that we have emergency operating plans. We have the ability to do it. We don't have an emergency management coordinator, but that doesn't stop us from putting together that plan and assigning responsibilities and even doing tabletops and other type of things where we can learn. There's lots of things online that we can get NIMS trained and ICS trained. Um, there's the National Fire Academy that also doubles as the Emergency Management Center where they have specific classes that are fully paid by the federal government, um, in Emmitsburg, Virginia, Emmitsburg, Virginia. Um, is it Virginia or Maryland? Emmitsburg, um, Maryland, maybe? I don't know. Emmitsburg, I thi, I thought it was Virginia, Southern Virginia. But anyway, that will pay for, for mayors and councils to go out and train and, and learn about emergency scenarios and situations and, and what they should do and how to deal and communicate with, with residents and, and get the most out of everybody was what I've been hearing. So we can be a little bit better next time and a little bit better as we go down. Heaven forbid, we don't have a bunch of emergencies, but they come. I mean, they come, both nature as, as well as man-made. Um, so communication as the chief started is, is probably the number one thing. And, and that learning and being prepared through various sources, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's out there, um, to, to help better our community in times to come.
Thank you, Conrad. And we'll close with you, the chief there, since you were able to hear everybody's input and see what your last thoughts are on all this.
Absolutely. So, some of the questions, it's the first time, like I said, in six and a half years where I had many council members show up on scene. I'm like, well, okay, what do we do now? But it is things that we learn from, you know, is, is making sure chain of command, you know, making sure we got people out, somebody taking the lead and, and make sure we're, we're basically we're controlling the chaos, right? And so some of the things we learned is now knowing that moving forward, if this scenario was to happen again, it would be more of saying, all right, Mayor, you know, hey, I'm your emergency management coordinator for the city. I'm no expert. I'm the voluntold one because that's the way it's set up in the government. But, but now having Councilmember Brewer, uh, one of the things that me and the mayor talked about is the EOC. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm working chief. I'm a field chief. I'm out there with the troops. I was making calls because our apparatus were doing other calls and I wasn't able to get to the EOC. Now, I think the way we've got it set up now is if we have an event like that again, Councilmember Brewer with his many years of experience, uh, in law enforcement is a great asset to say, hey, head to the EOC. Um, and then now I've got a direct line to where instead of me having to pull up and, and take a photograph of an issue, date it, put the information on there and then start stockpiling that myself, I can report it to the EOC where now we've got somebody there also as described to start punching in the important information that we need for our city. So we've learned and we already So, we've learned, and we already have made changes to that, so that's one of the things I wanted to mention earlier. You know, some of the comments, and people say, "Well, why are firemen cutting down trees?" Well, we don't have a public works, we don't have a roads department. So, and taking trees off of roadways, to me, falls on the emergency response side of it, making sure our fire department access roads are clear for us to be able to get to those citizens in that scenario. And we could take and jump out and kind of help some of our known people that we frequently respond to. Couple of them on Glen Acres are retired veterans. I knew that personally because we've been there a bunch, and so, we did reach out some there, and we did go clear the gentleman's property, him and his wife, because the front of their house was completely barricaded. And so, I did ask, and the mayor was there and said, "Man, there's a few I know we need to go, we're going to go help." We didn't ask, we're going to go help, because I think that's part of what we do as servants, you know, being a servant leader and working for the citizens. So, but we do, I agree. We all got to make sure that we, I'm not a dam expert, I had no clue about the dam, but I've learned a lot from it. But again, you know, the teamwork helped us out and made things happen. And we dress, we do have an EOC. One of the things that I looked at in talking to Councilmember Day last week, when he called up and asked some questions and had some good conversation, is I would like to, you know, you have citizens emergency response teams, those are big all over the place. Well, I'd like to change that a little bit. I'd like to go back to some of the old-school fire service, the bucket brigades. And we built a bucket brigade, which involves citizens of the community, similar to CERT, that they can come out in situations like this and be able to assist us. They can help in disasters, they can, we can teach them how to do search and different things like that. We can also use them during events. And so, talking to Councilmember Day, it kind of triggered a little switch and be something a little different than your typical CERT team. We would still partner with them and work with them, but bring back a bucket brigade, which is a bunch of members of our citizens that now become an extension, an additional personnel for us as a fire department. So, that's one thing that I know that we're going to start pushing. Anybody that wishes to be a part of it, anybody sitting up there, you know, I'd love to have some that say, "Hey, I'm going to be the first one to jump in there, and let's be a part of this team. Let's build this bucket brigade and build this citizen team to where we can, you know, have an expansion of personnel now on these scenarios." So, anybody that's sitting out here in the crowd, Mr. Kipit, while you're sitting around there, he's trying to hide behind the podium, Bev, all of y'all, but there's something that was triggered that I think that I'm going to start pursuing. My brother is a fire chief in Glade Water, Texas. I've kind of, I've told him I'm stealing it from him. He was the first one, he kind of put this together and kind of worked out the kinks. And I said, "Well, now I need to take it from you." And he said, "It's all yours." So, kind of worked out all the bugs, and I think it's a great asset for the community to have this bucket brigade team built. So, that was one thing there I wanted to mention earlier. And then, EOC training, some of the classes I've taught over the years, whether it's here in Saudi Arabia, is EOC training, Emergency Operating Center training. And it may be something that we can put together in-house, we can have a council retreat or whatever one night, and we can kind of sit down. I know Councilmember Brewer will jump in because of his many years of experience in police, we could put together some classes. And it's just knowledge-based, just to kind of get you to understand some of the things that are being discussed, why we do it. And if the council thinks that that would be something they would like to have, we can work on putting the classes together. I threw you under the bus, sir. But other than that, I think I've covered everything there. It was great to see everybody show up, great to see the participation, citizens calling, asking what they can do, bringing food to the station. Sarah Naylor was another one. She brought several meals to the station because she knew the troops were whipped for that 48 hours. And so, it was nice to see the community turn out and offer all the assistance that they did. So, honored to be here, blessed.
Thanks, Chief. And I'll also add on the food. If you have not had a breakfast sandwich made by Lorna Kipit, you're missing out. Please tell the wife thank you, because I had one, and I know I brought the rest to Firehouse. Yep, you were out on a call. And then, Day, do you have something? And we'll go to comments and close out.
Just wanted to add on, there's a lot of citizens who are wondering why the city was taking a little bit extra time to get CWD to come out and clean this up. You know, a lot of people said, "Hey, my yard's ready to come and take this stuff." Two reasons, or actually, there's three reasons, but two primary reasons. One, insurance adjusters wanted to come out and actually see storm damage before we cleaned it up. That was one of the primary reasons. But the second reason was actually, I have a neighbor, and I never, lives nearby, I'm still not going to out-help this person, but he works over at the fire station, and he was helping other people clean up their properties, and he didn't have time to clean up his own. And so, this was to give them a little bit more time. Myself as well, like, I was about two weeks in before I was able to finally start chopping up limbs and start removing that stuff. So, we have to also remember, these guys are, you know, he has some great guys on his staff, I'm really proud of who he's got on his staff over there, where they were putting the city first, and they were putting their own properties, including severe damage to their own property, second, to make sure everybody else was okay before they went home and cleaned up their own mess. So, that's the reason why we extended the time on the CWD and why I asked the mayor for him to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, again, appreciate everyone on that, and we will go to councilmember reports and announcements. Councilmember Easter, do you have anything for reports or announcements?
I'm going to defer to Dan. We've talked to some folks on some water issues, and we're kind of making some progress on that, if you want to talk about it, Dan, or... Okay? That's fine with me.
Councilmember McClain, do you have anything? Councilmember Brewer?
We're going to be having our very first town hall. We're looking at probably sometime the week of July 15th. We'll firm up the day. Got a meeting with Conrad on Friday. We're going to be talking about home rule and kind of give, it's kind of like a home rule one-on-one, kind of go through it, kind of the timeline we're looking at, and hopefully, we'll get enough involvement that we'll have some people that may want to eventually become, be a part of the commission, because we're going to set up a charter commission. So, that'll be coming up, and we'll have more information coming on that.
Couple of things from myself for the new members on council and myself. We have 90 days to get your in-board training, so if you haven't completed it, that goes for myself as well. Well, need to finish that up. I will be gone, correct me if I'm wrong, July 17th, 18th, and then back on the 19th to San Antonio for some extra TML training for myself. I want to make a quick announcement, there are also PENSY and Board of Adjustment applications. We need to make sure that is on the agenda for the next council meeting, because I believe that expires in June for some of those, and we need to make sure that that is cleared up. And last, if everyone can remember, we had a former council member, Lee Nichols, passed away last week, and if we can remember him in our thoughts and prayers with his family, his name is actually on the plaque out in front of the city hall. So, if we can think of his family and remember them in prayer, that is the passing of a former council member, Lee Nichols. Mr. Day, do you have anything?
Just only that, one, I regret that I wasn't at the last meeting. Sorry, I had business in eastern Arkansas, and I think you guys did a great job. I watched the meeting, and I felt that you guys did some good business. With respect to school bond committee, I just want to let you guys know that we are, the city is very interested in looking at getting an elementary school built here, if possible, if this bond passes. And so, we're going to start looking at avenues, kicking tires where we can, to see if there's an interest from the ISD to make this happen. We attended the 2050 meeting, and there was no school there. We're intending to put as much pressure as possible on them to get them to change their mind. So, if we can get a, what, set a K through five, K through six? K through five over at Sonoma Verde, that's a great start for us. And so, we're working hard on that, and just want to let you know that's a priority for us.
Mayor Pro Tim, sir?
Yeah, in terms of water, Mike Easter and myself have been assigned to the water committee, and it's been kind of nice not having water as our preemptive point of conversation throughout the entirety of a city council meeting. But that being said, we are doing our due diligence in terms of having conversations and meetings with various entities, people that, we're trying to garner as much information possible regarding water and what direction we're going to go as a city. And then, at some point in time, I'll present that to the mayor and to the city council. I have a couple of meetings coming up with Mary Smith out of Rockwall this Friday. So, they're the providers of water for RCH, and so, we want to have a conversation with them. I've had, this morning, we had a conversation with our own city water attorney, and apparently, we'll be letting the 13255 take over of RCH laps at this point, and maybe be going in a different direction. We're not decided upon that yet, and certainly, we haven't presented anything to council on that to make a decision. So, but we're exploring a more amicable approach to dealing with RCH, and hopefully, they'll be responsive to our outreach. And then, beyond that, we have, one more thing that slipped my mind. Oh, yeah, we'll be meeting with, actually, with RCH and David Naylor, president, next week, Mike Easter, myself, the mayor, David Naylor, and I think one board member, I think it's Chris George will be there. So, and it's just a, hopefully, it'll be a genteel conversation that we'll have and not anything competitive, as we may have experienced in the past. So, looking forward to having good, honest conversations and seeing where this is going to go, and hopefully, we'll get some resolution in the future on water altogether.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, and thank you, Mr. Easter. Both of you guys have been keeping up with the meetings and seeing the new approach is quite refreshing. Conrad, do you have anything? If not, I'm going to close us out, sir.
No, sir, thank you.
Well, at 8:36, this is adjourned. Thank you, folks, for coming.